Good evening, I call this meeting to order. It's the regular council meeting of October 23rd, 2017. The time is 7:30. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Portembliss.
Here.
Councilman Clark. Councilman Clark?
Present.
Councilman Corbett?
Here.
Councilman Geddings?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
And Mayor Hartwell?
Yes, I'm here, thank you. Would you please rise if you're able for an indication to be led by Councilman Richard Clark and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, let us look to you for help in identifying the problems we can rectify in our community and guide us in our efforts to administer aid to those in need. Help us to use our time and energy wisely, not to waste it on insignificant matters that benefit no one. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? Okay, we'll go to the substantive portion of our agenda. Item A1 is a public hearing for ordinance 2122, which is the new downtown development plan. Mr. Myers, I believe staff has a presentation before I open the public hearing.
Yes, Your Honor, I'll give some brief comments and then we'll have the staff presentation. In June of 1997, City Council created the Madison Heights Downtown Development Authority and as a result, the DDA adopted the Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan to establish the legal basis and procedure for the capture and expenditure of tax increment revenues. The duration of the plan was set at 20 years, commencing upon adoption by council, and is due to expire with tax collections this December, end of December. Accordingly, last year, council adopted a goal to review and update the Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan to guide the continued development of the Downtown Development District. On September 12th, the DDA Board of Directors unanimously approved and updated DDA Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan for council's consideration. So presented for council's consideration is a copy of the amended, is the amended ordinance approving and adopting a new Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan. Following the required public hearing, staff, the DDA, and I recommend the council adopt the ordinance on first reading, and if approved, the ordinance will be scheduled for second reading at the regular council meeting of November 13th. The ordinance will take effect 10 days after its adoption and upon publication. And Mayor, Council, our economic and community engagement supervisor, Lyndon Williams, has a short overview to give council and the public.
Good evening.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, one of the most common questions I get from our citizens are, what is the DDA? What does the TIF stand for? And how does the DDA get their funding? And lastly, what are the boundaries of the DDA district? So, that'd be appropriate to start off with this first slide on some fast facts about our DDA. On March, as been stated, on March 10, 1998, the Downtown Development Authority adopted a Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan. This plan established the legal basis and procedures for the capture and expenditure of tax increment revenue that is used to finance recommended public improvements within the DDA. It consists of 13 board members, who are, a lot of them are here present for this today's meeting, and it is also a relatively small DDA, with just under 200 parcels and approximately 104 acres. The duration of the DDA's TIF plan is 20 years, and it will terminate with tax collection due in December of this year. So accordingly, last year, City Council adopted a goal to review and update this Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan to guide the continued development of the Downtown Development I stated, the other common question I get from our businesses is, what are the boundaries of the DDA district? So I'm gonna, just hopefully you see my, is there a mouse pointer right here? So the northern portion of our DDA district starts at Gardenia and John R., okay? And then it goes all the way down, all the way down to 10 Mile and John R. It picks up the last two parcels with the Bowling Alley and then auto repair shop at the 10 Mile and John R. corner, and it goes from the Service Drive on 11 Mile over here all the way to the other end of Lorenz, just before the high school. So that, I call it the small little cross of our DDA boundary, our DDA district. So a little bit about some of these projects that the DDA has provided funding over the years. And I'm not gonna go through all of them, but certainly I wanna highlight some of the bigger projects, like the clock tower construction. Of course, that was the first major project the DDA taken on. It's the major clock tower that you see at the 11 Mile and John R. intersection, very well-known. We've done, we started off with some monthly workshops, and it kind of morphed into some of the larger DDA special events, like the annual art challenge that's coming up actually in November. And for quite a number of years, we did the Taste Festival as well. And then we do quite a number of maintenance and beautification projects, like the, we currently still do, the right-of, right-of-way grass cutting and mowing and the weekly trash pickup. And then we've done some other significant road projects, like the whole alley improvement projects on the north side of 11 Mile. And then probably one of the most, or the largest project, as far as budget numbers go, was the permanent address plaque sign. That's one of our largest unifying element that you see in our DDA district, and that's that big, every DDA parcel or business received that seven-inch address plaque in the DDA at no additional cost to our DDA business owners. All right, how is the DDA funded? Again, that's another common question that we get from our residents. In order to finance the public improvements outlined in the development plan, the DDA has utilized the use of tax increment financing, which is the ability to capture the incremental increase in property taxes that results from improvements in the DDA district. So I'm gonna put a little illustration that I used for my DDA board. So if you can imagine, this is our DDA. Once the DDA district and the TIF plan is approved, the property values covered by that plan are essentially frozen. Future tax revenues attributed to any increase in value above that base value are then captured by the DDA authority in order to implement the projects outlined in the TIF and Development Now, TIF funds are then captured and spent only within the DDA district. Now, TIF is not an additional tax or a new tax, it is redirecting a portion of that tax revenue already being collected. And that's where you see in this, captured in this last slide here. Again, the premise behind TIF is fairly simple. It allows the authority to direct funds to engage in specific economic development activities without raising local property taxes. The value of the increment, the additional tax base created by new or increased development, saw this tremendous decline during the recession. And my next two slides helps to demonstrate that. I know it's a little bit small on the screen here, and I do have copies of both the PowerPoint presentation and copies of the draft plan too as well. So if anybody wants to come and pick that up afterward, I'd be more than happy to pass that out. All right, this DDA tax revenue forecast sheet best summarizes how these factors have impacted the DDA revenue. The forecast sheet provides a very conservative forecast of projected revenues based on a projected growth for the next 20 years. As you can see, the annual revenues are only estimated to increase from $58,000 in year one to just over $65,000 in year 20. In addition, since the passage of Proposal A, the state equalized value, or the SEV, has historically been higher than the taxable value of a property. However, with the wave of the housing crisis and the economic recession experienced in the last decade, the market value plummeted. The other major factor that has contributed to the steep decline in the capture is losses due to property tax appeals. The good news is that the Madison Heights DDA has no debt or loan obligations like you see in some of the other DDAs that are experiencing. And lastly, Madison Heights is 98% built out, which further limits the amount of new tax base and the tax increment to add to the TIF revenue. Again, funding for the DDA is derived exclusively from the incremental growth in real property taxes above the base rate year for those properties located in the DDA district. This chart shows how revenues have decreased nearly 75% over the last decade from $243,100 in fiscal year 2009 to '10, that's the peak right on the top of that chart there, to just above $50,000 for fiscal year 2018. Now, given the steep decline over the span of eight years and the projected trend over the next 20 years, the DDA worked hard to prioritize the projects identified in the revised plan within the budgetary constraints. So what about the DDA plan? So I'm gonna, the DDA board, at the September 12th board meeting, approved a draft of the amended TIF and Development Plan for council's final adoption. The amended plan is broken down into four main categories in ranking order on this chart. I'm gonna go again, just highlight some of the bigger projects in each category. I'm not gonna go through all of them, but I'm gonna highlight some of the ones that rank pretty high. No surprise there on the marketing and branding, some of the street skate improvements and permanent ID elements. The example I showed you, the ones we've done in the past, are those big address plaque signs where every DDA business owner or building received one. 11 Mile and John R. Center was, no surprise, ranked high. They're also looking for some unifying elements or marketing elements that we could apply to that key corner of our DDA. Some of the smaller projects that we're already doing, like the bike rec program, they would like to see a continuation of that. We just had, two weeks ago, had our bike rec unveiling, and we're gonna have two brand-new ones, one on John R. and one on 11 Mile, coming up actually next week. On the beautification effort, the most, again, it was not a surprise that it ranked number one, facade improvement program. We started this about seven years ago, one of the most successful grant program, one of two grant programs, where we, from a 50 to private to public matching, up to 50%, and at one point, up to $5,000 assisting property owners to beautify or make improvements to their physical buildings. This one ranked really, really high as well, planting trees in the right-of-way. That was a new idea that was proposed, believe that was generated through the town hall meetings as well. Proactive code enforcement, no surprise, they wanted to see that rubbed up. Acquisition and demolition of DDA parcel, we actually had that back in the day when first came in, the first DDA started. We started banking some line in our DDA budget. And then, of course, on the maintenance side, again, the right-of-way grass cutting, it's something we continue to do today. They still rank high, that was very, very, very important from our DDA board and from our stakeholders. Of course, the clock tower still needs, even though it's built, we still need to maintain it. We also do weekly trash pickup, so trash receptacles was, and other right-of-way improvements was still on there and important. Events, actually, is actually our largest list. We have many, many fun and many things that were suggested at the town hall meeting, and some of them we already do, so they, a lot of the board members and stakeholders said we need to continue that. But, like I said, we had some new ideas proposed, and number one that was ranked, or the one that was ranked number one was the farmer's market. An art challenge, like I said, it's coming up in November, we do that every year. It's going on our ninth year, and we're having a great start. In fact, our reception is planned for November, late November. I'm glad that it did continue to rank high. And a couple other fun things, like I said, the food truck rally, having an open house at the fire station number two, and then some brand-new ideas like the joint homecoming event, and even a DDA scavenger hunt. And that's really it for, just as quick, like I said, it was a very quick summary. I wanna thank my, of course, our mayor and city council, and our DDA board, and our stakeholders, our citizens, our business owners, and I see some of our DDA business owners here tonight. They worked very hard. It was about a year-long process that we went through this, so thank you for the opportunity to, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If anyone from the public would like to address city council on this downtown development plan, now's the opportunity to do so. Good evening, Ms. Moore.
Hello, I'm Gloria Moore, 27-368 Dartmouth. I was wondering how many residents were on the board and how many business people?
Let's see.
Also, is, on the second reading, will people have the opportunity to voice their opinions then?
Okay, your first question, there are 13 members on the board.
There's 13 board members on the DDA board, and majority have to have property interest in the DDA, okay? They're fellow business owners.
They're all business owners.
Some, we have a resident on there, and some out of district board members, but by statutory, right, they have, you have to have majority having property interest in the DDA.
And then, yes, there will be comments at the second reading as well. Would anyone else like to address city council? It's a public hearing on the downtown development plan. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Rosalind Grafstein. I'm going to try and get a clarification on Mrs. Moore's question. So in order to be a board member, you need to own a business in the DDA, is that correct?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the, all of our board members, DDA board members are appointed by mayor and council, okay? And they have to have, majority must have property interest in the DDA district. So many of them are property owners or business owners, or they work for the company or business.
Okay. Are there any residents, are there any Madison Heights residents on the current board?
Myself, Brian Hartwell, I'm on the board. I'm a resident of Madison Heights.
Does someone from council have to be on the board?
I believe the mayor, by the city ordinance, is designated as a member of the board.
Okay. And then my question, I just want to follow up on Mrs. Moore's and get some clarification there. My question is, the area that you've described, are there, is that all commercial or business property, or are there residential, school, parks, other types of property in there?
Yeah, it's mostly commercial, I would say almost 95% of it. However, there's a chunk in the middle that is school, you can think Wilkinson Middle School. There are very few multifamily housing in the district. I mean, there's some apartments on 11 Mile, I don't know if we have the colored use map. And then pretty much, most of the properties south of Lincoln are industrial.
Okay.
But, you know, mostly everything north of Lincoln is commercial, with the few exceptions, Wilkinson and some multifamily.
So there's one school and a smattering of apartments?
Yeah, and there's municipal building as well, the fire station.
Fire station. Okay. All right, thank you.
Public hearing's still open on the downtown development plan? Any other comments or questions from the public? All right, no one's asked to be recognized. I'll close the public hearing. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that on first reading, I'm gonna make sure I do this correctly, the council approves the recommended, approves the amended and restated Downtown Development Authority Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan on first reading.
Your Honor, just to clarify, that's ordinance 2122.
Yes, thank you. Try.
And schedule the next meeting?
I like that too.
Is there a second for the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Councilman, I'll restate the motion. Councilman Corbett, let's see, move to adopt ordinance 2122 on first reading and schedule the next meeting for second reading, November 13th, 2017. Ordinance 2122 is the amended and restated Downtown Development Authority TIF and Development Plan. What's the, what does city council say about this? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Mrs. Scott?
I've been here long enough to see great changes, very positive changes, in that section of Madison Heights. I do remember one of the first things, improvement, that I remember was back in the 70s when Ernie Fisher decided to get rid of diagonal parking. Everybody parked diagonally on the street in front of the businesses, thereby creating, you know, very narrow roads and people driving in and out to park. I do remember, it used to be like that, back in the 50s, and some of you may remember that, but I do remember that one of the things that Ernie Fisher did, our former city manager, was to put berms on there with grass. And that was the first I remember of any beautification in that area, which I think was a really plus, a real plus to our economic development there. But I think it's so beneficial to have this economic development, and I know that council's gonna support it for many, many years. We get so many benefits from it, it's just incredible. And with Lyndon Williams at the helm doing this, we can't go wrong.
You know, I do wanna recognize the members of the Downtown Development Authority Board who've, you know, some have been here all 20 years, and others have just been here for a year, you know, giving us some new energy, some new ideas. Our chairman's birthday is today, the Honorable Mike Van Buren, our vice chair's Ms. Neeny. Then, you know, this board, it's one of the more busier boards in our city. They meet a lot, their meetings are long, and not only do they have meetings at City Hall, but they're out in the community. So you'll remember the joint town hall we did last summer at Wilkinson Middle School, that was the downtown board's idea. And that, from that town hall, where we had 70 residents and business owners, stakeholders, come and roll up their sleeves, the ideas from that town hall that our board hosted is really what formed the basis of the four categories for the new and revised downtown. So my hat is off to the downtown board, you know, I'll name some of the others, the other board members, Ricky Bustler, Ruth Charle Boy, Joe Jarboe, Johnny John, Dan Johnson, Joe Keys, Ben Myers, Mike Shepard, Marlene Spreitzer, and Kerry Valmassey. This is, this is a great board that the city has. It's exciting what the potential is for the next 20 years, and these goals will be measurable. Some of them are very short-term goals, like, can we hold a successful art challenge? Can we recruit enough food trucks? You know, those things are measurable, but over the course of the 20 years, the long-term goal is whether we have improved property values and increased development in this district. And I think this board, you know, as business owners, as property owners, have, you know, an immediate interest in improving this district. It's their neck on the line, they got skin in the game. So thank you to the board, thank you to Lyndon Williams and Jim Schaefer and Ben Myers and Drew, one of our newest employees, and also to the DPS. We've been testing out some signs this summer and this fall, maybe you saw those, what are they, the little toppers on the top of all the street signs? The wave-finding signs. These things are works in progress. Sometimes we're learning as they go, as we go, but most of the time, we won't. This 20-year plan is so well-vetted, and so I encourage city council to vote yes tonight and then yes on second reading. But it's up to city council now, and it's up to city council really every year for the whole 20 years. If city council wants to change some of the priorities of spending, that can be done year to year to year, but this is a great place to start, a great reason to be proud of Madison Heights, an easy way for us to market ourselves and the region and to attract new business and development. Any other discussion from council?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
You had mentioned spending priorities, and I know Ms. Williams was mentioning the scoring and the ranking system. Could we just get some clarification for that for the audience as to who scored? Was that at the town hall? Was that the board after the town hall? Just to kind of inform how those rankings took place.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, like I said, it was a year-long process, over a year-long process. We really kicked it off with that joint DDA and city council town hall meeting. So out of that town hall meeting, many, many, many ideas were generated from that meeting. Obviously, with the budget constraints, we can't do them all, so we had the tedious task. Not only we asked our stakeholders that participated in the town hall meeting, we had every bit of 70-plus board members and citizens, business, community leaders, school members, representatives come and join us. So we had a broad spectrum of ideas generated. And we had to wind that down, and the board members themselves had to go through that list and prioritize, you know, within the budget constraints that we knew with the, you know, projected TIF revenues that we had in front of us. And that's, all of those ideas were put into those four main categories. Go to that slide here. So all of those ideas, big and small, medium, seemed to fit within these four main categories. Like I told you, events was like the most, especially at the town hall meeting, was the most, you know, folks that were most vocal about, but the other categories, they were just as important. We had them take that hold, if there was 20 ideas under marketing, we had to wind it down, okay? And these are the, on this chart here, you'll see number one, number two, three, and four, and then obviously on down. Those are the priority items, and in the TIF plan, actually winds it down, takes it down even further by year, project year. Does that make sense?
Your Honor?
I know, it's a little hard to see up here.
Yes, Mr. Bliss?
Just a follow-up question to that. So they're ranked within the four categories, marketing, beautification, maintenance, and events. Were they ranked collectively as well, or just when they were broken down into the four categories?
So, Mr. Mayor, yeah, both. They were collectively, and then, and then, these were the top ideas, and then we asked for each of those categories to rank them as well. So many of the ideas did not get cut from that town hall meeting, so a lot of them are, you know, if there was five, there was like five different variation to the same idea. So again, we kind of made it a little bit broad in the beginning as we're prioritizing and ranking, and then we got down to, each of those within the category, we actually explained in a little more detail. So in the TIF plan, it explains a little bit more. This is just a snapshot of the four main categories.
Perfect. Yeah, I was at the town hall, it was great to get all of the, all of the... Yeah, I was at the town hall, it was great to get all of the, all of the residents insight and their opinion and what they'd like to see in the downtown and, uh, it, it sounds like you did a great job of coalescing that feedback and putting it into these categories and ranking it. So hats off to the DDA Board for putting this together.
One thing I, I, I want to clarify. Our next council meeting is when there will be the change of City Council, from the current City Council to the new administration. And, um, staff made a recommendation to me that perhaps we should delay the second reading until the second November meeting. That would be the night of the tree lighting ceremony.
Whatever, Your Honor prefers, I'll modify the motion if you, if you'd like.
Because I was hoping to get, um, spoken input from the DDA Board, so that may take...
Posting or...
Yeah, posting.
Yeah, then with the agreement of the support, I'd move that to the second meeting in November for the second reading.
All right, Mr. Corbett amended the motion to move it to the second November meeting.
Mr. Mayor. Support agrees.
Support it, okay. Sorry to interrupt. Uh, any other discussion from City Council on the, the subject? All right, I'll restate the motion, was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to adopt ordinance 2122, the restated and amended Downtown Development Authority Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan on first reading and schedule the second reading for the regular meeting of November twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. Last chance for any other discussion, council? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. All right, next is meeting open to the public. Would anyone like to address City Council on any subject? Please do so now.
Gloria Moore, twenty-seven, three sixty-eight Dartmouth. Friends of the Madison Heights area, senior citizens is having its third Tuesday meeting, November twenty-first, over at Wilkinson. Beverages and snacks are available and everyone is, is welcome. We're going to be working on our Christmas items, so anybody that's interested in their input on it, there'd be the perfect time for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Meeting open to the public, any subject? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Rosalind Graffstein again. Um, I just want to say my husband and I were at the DDA Town Hall last summer and I'm really excited to see that, uh, they're taking, uh, into account our ideas and suggestions from last year. I'm excited to see what we're going to do and I really like the idea of having an open house at the second fire station. Um, we enjoyed, my family and I enjoyed the pancake breakfast this past weekend in support of breast cancer awareness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thwait, it's really nice to see you.
Hello, nurse, yes.
Welcome back.
Name is Kenneth Thwait, T-H-W-E-A-T-T, uh, known on the street as Ponghead. I request that, uh, the, the, the City Council give, uh, recognition for appreciation to the Methodist church located on Eleven Mile in our city. Uh, the fantastic pastor and the whole congregation, they reach out to veterans and try to help veterans as much as they can. They give us free dinners, free breakfasts, c- cards for foods, clothing certificates, bus passes, and counseling. And, um... And they've been doing this for a long time. I don't think there's any other church in the state of Michigan that'll reach out to veterans like they do. And I'm not Methodist, you don't have to be Methodist, you can be any relation, you don't have to be living in Madison Heights. Any, any nomination, you can be any gender, they'll take you in and work with you. And it's a great place to have, that, that somebody's willing to spend their money from the church to give to vets, because it's one thing we got to remember, without a vet, they would be no United States. And think about that. And another thing I want to get into is, is the agenda. I talked to Dave Solis for a long time, unfortunately, I didn't see him talk to the, I wanted him to talk to the council about the agenda, not gender, the blight, pardon me. And he, I didn't see him do it, so maybe he did, maybe he didn't, but he did it in front of me. I think you people are putting some ordinances in without looking at all the puzzle, okay? You, when you, I don't, I am not, I'm not, I'm for less light, but at the same time, I'm for keeping seniors where they're at. Our goal in Madison City of Progress is to keep seniors in their home as long as possible. And if you're, if ever you get pushed out of your home, you're going to know what it feels like. Until it happens, that's a problem of age, people, they don't understand what happens. But you must keep blight out of the thing. The laws and, and ordinances are important, you must have them, but they're not bearing any cement. That don't mean they can't. I gave an example, I was, uh, working with the Madison Heights Police Force and I had a partner, and we were going down the street and he says, "We got a problem." I said, "What's the problem?" He said, "Well, a couple, older couple is sitting on the bench." I said, "Yeah, they're talking." And I said, "Yeah, they are." And he says, "Well, it's past ten o'clock," which is the ordinance for the parks, ten o'clock. Now, by being the fir- former Deputy Sheriff of Oakland County and Raleigh County Public Safety, I learned that flexibility is an important thing to have. You just can't look at the, the ordinance and the laws and say, "This is what must happen." And so I would like to see a little bit more work in, in, uh, not just the blight, because I'm not for blight, but at the same time, I'm not for blight to get seniors kicked out of their homes. So they come down and, and then, and then say, "You got to have this little mark paint, you got to do this, you got to do that." Well, one thing about it, we don't have the help, the volunteer help, except the shark to help a senior. I mean, when you get to be a senior, I said, "One day you'll feel it when you get to be old, older," because you won't be able to pick up something, you won't be able to last as long. I, I went out to the yard, in my backyard, front yard, and I, I'd go about three or four hours and that was it. Took me over five, five weeks to, to go through it.
How about this, Ken? I, I know you meant to defend Dave Solis, he's been, Dave's been working all summer going block by block, looking for ways to help people, and he's, he's picking some of the, the biggest blight issues, you know, burnt-out cars, things like that. So Dave's single-handedly cleaning up our city this year. And also, I know you listen carefully to Dave, another big issue that he reminds us of is keeping seniors in their home. And so how about this, Ken? How about I ask, and I know Dave and the rest of council asked for this, we'll get a report and, uh, we'll have it published and I'll give you a copy of it, to see what the city does and what the city can do for seniors, because you're right, that policy of keeping people in their homes as long as they can, it, it's a public policy that we all should be worried about. And you know, we, we do things like the Home Chore Program, it's, we don't have enough volunteers, but we do things, well, you know, we'll shovel your, shovel your drive, we'll cut your grass, rake your leaves. We do some small things.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but nobody shovelled my walk-in, we had that one snow two years ago, and I, I only had a shovel, okay? And I did the whole thing piece by piece. And I, nobody offered, I didn't call anybody because nobody said to call.
How about this?
You want to give me a number to call?
It's not a threat, because I'm your neighbor, I know where you live. How about, I pick you up tomorrow and we go to the senior center and try to get you signed up.
Well, I already know, no, I can't.
You can't get signed up.
Because I've got too much, uh, the income is out there. I cannot get, you can't get signed up unless you have low income or disability.
So that suggests you can afford it.
Pardon me?
That suggests you can afford it.
I understand.
Yeah.
None of them rule, but the point about it, Detroit brings people in, volunteers, it's out of state and they help Detroit. I'm not knocking the shark people for their grit, but I'm just saying, we don't have enough volunteers. I know where the problem is with the shark thing, that they don't go to churches and stuff or whatever, they don't do, okay? But I think that shoving the snow, that's, like you said, that one day it was really heavy, so I had to do it by piece by piece, because I had a shovel. Most people have snow clothes, I don't have a snow clothes, okay? I do it at a lawn mower. So I'm, I'm just saying, what we need to do is look at some packages, ordinance and stuff, and if we want to increase something, but if you're going to increase, are you thinking about adding any, uh, code enforcement offices?
Uh-huh, indeed.
Huh? Are you?
Yes.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
I didn't know you, nobody tells me. But the point I'm saying, if you are, you're going to need to. Now, what we got on there now is pretty good people, I talked to both of them, so they're pretty good people. And one, one woman's been on there like sixteen, seventeen years, and, uh...
Ken, I'll give you the final word.
Huh?
I'll give you the final word, what's your final thought?
Okay, my final, so I want to go to one thing and then hold it tight, i- is the school bond. Now, Mr. Speck, I know he lives in Oxford, so, and he gets like an eighty-figure salary probably, uh, but he's saying that seniors can get a reduction on their taxes. Well, not all seniors can get a reduction on their taxes because it, it's an income level again, okay? And the people in the private buildings, they're going to be hit because of, the landlord's going to raise their rent. Now, one day, not one day, two years ago, and I've been doing it ever since, I went to the school board, I went to, uh, Mr. Speck, and I asked him, "Could you allow seniors to go to activities free?" He told me, "No." Lampers does it, okay? But the thing about it is, why do you make it easy for seniors? Now, I have, I do have a bachelor's degree in business in Washington, and I told him what they would get in return for the snack bar from seniors that didn't pay, that would make up for the difference. But the man, the man inside this world, he said, "Well, you, you can look at the school and it'd be so nice." And it is nice, anything new is nice. I mean, we can't deny that most of the time, very rare, but what are you going to do? Not eat, not buy your pills, and go by and look at the school and hope that it helps you, fill your stomach, or feel your pain? It's not. And as far as Mr. Speck is out here, unfortunately, I can't, I would be willing to debate it for, there's not much time before election, with him any place and any time he wants.
Be sure you go to the school for that, the city doesn't have oversight over the school.
I understand, but I'm just letting you know about the school bond, I understand, but you said you can talk about anything here.
Anything you want, yeah.
And I am.
Read the newspaper if you want, but...
No, I don't, I am, that's what you asked, you said you can talk about anything. Well, I'm living in a school bond, it affects the city. Now, you might not think it affects the city, it does affect the city, because if somebody buys a house, their taxes for twenty years is going to be higher than it would be some other place that did not build the school. So it does affect the city. Almost everything affects the city. But, so I was trying to say is, is, I'm, you know, talking, as far as the church thing, I would like to see, they deserve, believe me, a, 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 a appreciation award. Now, we, uh, really, we got two people, and you know one of them, uh, Rosalind, Rosalind, uh, the pastor, and then April who takes care of the vets. You know April, because she went to have lunch with dinner with him, so, and I know that. But anyhow, the only thing I'd like to see two of them, if it's possible, and I think they deserve it, they, they're helping the city with the people. And i- it, it's a great thing to have. I would like to see it, like you said, statewide, but I checked around the state, nobody has it. All of a sudden, she decided, the pastor decided to help veterans. So it's a nice thing they, they're doing, believe me. Thank you.
Meeting is still open to the public, would anyone else like to address City Council?
I'd like to, uh, introduce myself, I'm Tom Lewandowski, been around Madison Heights for about three years, bought a building on Lincoln and I bought the old, uh, Pamahini Cooley Building on John Arden. And I would just like to say that, uh, I'm a forty-two-year commercial painting contractor, I've had quite a bit of interaction with different cities. The city services here are outstanding, the, they come by the street, they clean, the trash picks up, I never see anybody goofing around. The building department was outstanding to work with and, uh, oh, I'm choked up because...
Oh, thank you.
Over the years, I've represented, uh, some complaints with McDonald's franchisees in cities where they're telling what color they can paint their building, if not. This city is just really on the verge of breaking out. So I don't know if anybody here, you know, I don't want to throw out cities because some people may not want it to look like Berkeley or, or, uh, Ferndale, but downtown Madison Heights is just waiting for people that care to clean it up and commerce and people that are in walking distance, that don't even need a car, to walk and do commerce on this main building. But, you know, when I bought my first building, to me, it, my first impression was it was a ghost town and people, uh, it looked like, you know, a lot of stores weren't leased out. And I'll tell you, it, it doesn't even take money sometimes. I call myself the janitor of the block, just picking up hundred cigarette butts every morning, but people just pick up the paper and take pride in their own property and say hello to each other. It, it, it won't take twenty years for this city to get where it's going, but really, I just want to take the time. I know people come in here and beef their, uh, their grievances, but a lot of great people here, just really doing a good job and, uh, pretty excited to see Madison Heights' future and work with people like Linda.
Thank you, Tom, very much. Would anyone else like to address City Council this evening? Okay, no one asks, no one else is asked to be recognized. So continuing on the agenda, we will go to item D1 under reports from the Community Development Director. Uh, Mr. Myers, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Your Honor. Oakland County Information Technology has entered into an agreement with ESRI Incorporated, uh, which is a major provider of mapping software, uh, to provide online accounts at no cost to local cities. These accounts will allow us to access their ARC GIS or Geographic Information Systems online, uh, for mapping and data viewing. Uh, this, this program will allow the city to comprehensively update our utility maps in a manner that allows easier data sharing, uh, to share data with contractors, to improve the mapping of our projects, to allow the police and fire departments to easily update and maintain our existing maps that show public safety issues like chemical hazards and, and crucial infrastructure, uh, like hydrants. Uh, it will allow users to make their own maps and it will reduce dependency on quickly outdated paper maps. Uh, these online accounts typically cost five hundred dollars per user per year, meaning this agreement represents a major upgrade in our functionality at no additional cost to the city. In fact, if the city were to have to purchase, uh, the twenty-five user licenses that we anticipate under the agreement, uh, you can do the math, the cost would be twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, these online accounts will be most valuable for securely sharing our own utilities data with, uh, within the city, uh, with contractors without relying on the maps, and it allows selected users such as employees and contractors to view our utility data, which is not directly accessible to third parties. Uh, the data that's provided through the agreement is county-level data that's already available to the city, but it'll simply be provided through this new online platform with no change in the type of data available to third parties. And again, the main benefit is to increase our mapping, uh, capabilities. In two thousand sixteen, the city signed a similar agreement with Oakland County to provide information technology services, uh, for a number of things like online payments, over-the-counter payments, local tax payments, our jury management system, uh, web publishing, support services, data center use, uh, our OakNet, which is our, our backbone that connects us, uh, internet service, and the Clemis Law Enforcement System. This agreement will cover those above services with no changes, but it adds the access to ARC GIS online and high-quality, uh, aerial photography. Uh, so staff and I would recommend that council approve the inter-local agreement with Oakland County and authorize the manager, uh, city manager to sign on behalf of the city. And I do want to recognize tonight the, uh, efforts of Drew Phillips from Community Development, who heads up our GIS operation. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. What's the wish of City Council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we, uh, accept the inter-local, or accept and approve the inter-local IT agreement with Oakland County for new GIS services.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to approve the inter-local agreement with Oakland County, authorizing the city manager to sign on behalf of the city for GIS, uh, services. Any discussion from City Council? All right, we'll vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion carries. All right, we can skip ahead to the minutes, can I please have a motion regarding the minutes from October ninth?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Sir, I move that the council approve as printed the, um, minutes of the regular council meeting of October ninth.
Very well, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to adopt as printed the minutes of the regular meeting of October nine, two thousand seventeen. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. All right, appointments to our boards and commissioners, boards and commissions, um, in our informational report this week, we had a couple new applicants to boards. So is the crime commission a mayor's appointment? Yeah, it is. Okay, so there's an applicant, John Turchin, we all know him. Would someone on council accept my appointment of John Turchin to a seat on the crime commission? Three-year term expiring September twenty twenty.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
It's a pleasure to nominate, or to move to approve the mayor's appointment of John Turchin, my immediate predecessor in this seat, to a term on the crime commission.
Very well, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve the mayor's appointment of John Turchin to a three-year term on the crime commission, term expiring September twenty twenty. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion carries. We also have an applicant to fill the final alternate seat on the Arts and Cultural Advisory Board. Does anyone have that name? It's Vita Palazzolo.
Yep, Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we appoint Vita Palazzolo to the last alternate slot on the Arts and Culture Advisory Board with a term that expires 9/25/19.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gettins.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Bliss made a motion, seconded by Councilman Gettins, to appoint Vita Palazzolo to a three-year term as an alternate on the Arts and Culture Board, term expiring September 2019. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Mr. Mayor.
Motion carries. Yes, Mr. Gettins.
Are we gonna do Martha Kehoe and Cliff, or did I miss it?
Yep, if you want to make that motion, you can join them together.
I make a motion to continue Cliff Oglesby and Martha Kehoe as members of the Community Development Block Grant Review Committee.
There's a third applicant. Do you want to handle that separately?
No, I thought we'd... Okay, and Mr. John Turchin also.
Thank you, Mr. Gettins. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Gettins, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to appoint Cliff Oglesby, John Turchin, and Martha Kehoe to three-year terms on the Community Development Block Grant Review Committee, terms expiring November 2020. Any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. All three of them are appointed. Any other applicants tonight?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I move that we appoint Curtis Kogelmann to ITAC with a term ending 2/10/2019.
Thanks. What's the name?
Curtis Kogelmann.
How do you spell the last name?
K-O-G-E-L-M-A-N.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to appoint Curtis Kogelmann to the ITAC for the vacant term expiring February 2019. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Any other appointments this evening? All right, hearing none, there's no executive session, so before I adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments from City Council, and I'd like to begin with Mr. Corbett.
A few items this evening, Your Honor. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to the firemen for the pancake breakfast. I know Your Honor was involved in promoting that. It's a very generous act on them to work the pancake sale. The proceeds we're going towards, as I recall, breast cancer research. So thank you to the guys. They did a terrific job, and hopefully, they've indicated they may do it again in the future, and I hope the community will continue to support and help that project along. There's an election coming up, and just a reminder to everybody to vote, two weeks from today, I believe it is. And good luck to all the candidates. I've been there, I've been on both sides of it, and winning and losing. And while winning is much more fun, I think that credit goes to all the people who have put themselves out there. It's not an easy thing to put yourself out, put your ideas on the table, and they get criticized and they get supported. And occasionally, people forget, you really are a person who hears what's being said, but it's good. Thank you to all of them. That's a terrific thing. It's a great field, and I wish everybody the best of luck. Speaking of elections, the next meeting in three weeks from now, that meeting is normally given over to ceremony. The new folks are installed. There's the bustle of all the administrative duties that have to go on. And so I wanted to take a minute now, before the storm hits, to just say a few words for my friend at the other end of the table, Mr. Clark, who will be leaving us now after a couple of years, taking a break. We're gonna give him a sabbatical time off of good behavior. 20 years on the job, most people, you know, commit murders, get off sooner, but I'm happy to have served with you. It was an honor. You and all of your work over these years have acted with dignity and a real respect for the people. I know some things have gotten you mad over the years, but you always kept your calm, and you were a model, I think, for all of us up here. And your work, it got mentioned in a different context this evening, but your volunteer work of the community between the Reserve Fire, sorry, Reserve Police and the SHARP Program and all the other projects you've been involved with speak highly of you as a man and a leader. So thank you very much. I'm very pleased and honored to have served with you. That's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss.
Yes, Your Honor. I too would like to take a moment to thank Councilman Clark for his service. You know, I've sat in those chairs and watched you serve, and, you know, I've had the opportunity to now serve with you for the past four years, and the thing that stands out to me is that you really and truly feel when a resident comes to you with an issue, and it's evident in how you prioritize and how quickly you get in touch with, you know, the corresponding departments and take care of that individual resident's need. And it's something that I strive to live by as a public servant, and I know many of us up here are just sometimes in awe with how passionate you are about each and every resident's needs, problems, complaints, praise, you name it. If a resident talks to you, you truly hear them, and that's, it's a phenomenal thing, and it's something that we're all gonna have to chip in to fill, you know, fill that vacancy that you're leaving behind, because it truly is a big one. I'd also like to talk tonight about where I think the future is in the city. I think we, tonight, we approved on first reading the DDA proposal for the next 20 years, and it's a really exciting time. I think that, you know, one of our business owners talked about that. I think, I think right now, we're seeing a resurgence in Madison Heights. We've seen it over the last few years, and it's been building, and it's been building up, and we're at this point where it's that powder keg about to explode, where we're seeing all of this positive momentum. And hats off to everybody involved in that. That only happens, you know, you talk about it takes a village, that only happens if we have dozens upon dozens of really active, passionate residents and business owners in our community who want to make a difference. We saw that with the Arts Board, that, that's a fairly large board, and it was filled by the next meeting. I mean, we just filled the last alternate seat on that board. So the amount of really passionate people that are serving on all of our boards and commissions and trying to amplify the things that we're putting forward up here and that our residents need, you know, that town hall was exciting. You know, we had 70 people in that DDA town hall, all with all these amazing ideas, and to see that flush out into this formal plan for the next 20 years, it's exciting. And I'm really thrilled to have been a part of queuing it up to this point, and I can't wait to see, I really can't wait to see what the next few years hold with all of this passion and excitement coming from everybody in all corners, every board, and every community group in the city, too. I mean, it's phenomenal, and it's great to be a part of it. I personally haven't seen, haven't seen this much excitement and momentum since I was a young boy in the 90s, and the gazebo was put in, was put in place in front of City Hall, and the amount of community activity and the amount of business participation, we're seeing a renewal of that, and it's awesome to be a part of. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Gettins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did some math before the meeting started, and I believe Rich has attended about 500 council meetings in the last 20 years, and I believe he's missed once. And I figured it out with Linda Williams' help on the calculator, that's 998 on the percentage. He's a great councilman. He's got character, common sense, and he's consistent, and you're gonna be very much missed, Mr. Clark. You're a great councilman. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my brother Jeff, and your surrogate son, Nick Rochowsky, who considers you a surrogate dad to him. We have enjoyed our 20 years together, working hard and through good times and bad times. And throughout much of that time, your late wife, Lois, was a very dear friend of all of us here. And we know you're, you may be leaving council, but you're starting the next chapter in your life, and I know you're gonna be involved in city-related issues, especially as it pertains to seniors. And we're gonna miss seeing you up here at the council table, but we're hopefully not gonna miss seeing you because with Rich Clark, once you're his friend, you're always his friend. So I, my wish for you, Rich, is continued good health, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. Not only do I agree with everything that's been said about Rich, but one thing that stands out to me is that, and this is something the public doesn't see all the time, but I don't think I've seen anyone put as much preparation and homework and coming prepared to meetings as Rich does. If he gets a call from a citizen, or he has an agenda in front of him, he will research it, he'll ask questions, he'll come in, and I'm not just talking about council. I can tell you, for the six years I had the privilege of working at public services, and I would attend the senior advisory board meetings for Rich, with Rich, and every time he would come in prepared to pass on information from the council, to give the board updates on what's going on in the community, answer questions, and you knew the concern was always genuine, it was heartfelt, and Rich, I'm gonna miss you. Thank you for your service.
Mrs. Prince?
Thank you, Mayor. I too am going to miss my partner right next to me. You always have been a gentleman to me. I appreciate that very much. And I always say to everybody about you that you don't always talk a lot, but when you talk, it's important to listen to you. So thank you very much. And then on another note, the election is November 7, citywide election. All our precincts will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. that day. If you need an F and T ballot, please visit the city clerk's office, or you can go online and make an application. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, I'll let you have the final word in a minute.
Okay.
So do you mind if I pass you, and we'll go to Mrs. Scott?
I thought I could get through this, but as usual, I can't. I too would like to thank Rich for his... Oh, am I looking? I would like to thank him for everything he's done for our city council and for our citizens. He made a great friend, and he encouraged my husband to get involved in the SHARP program, and I appreciate that so much, because it made him feel very productive. Thank you. And Rich, I wish you good health, but I wanted to tell you, you've always been a role model for me, because you got involved in the Michigan Municipal League, and you felt it was very important to know exactly what you were doing on this council. And so when you talk about preparation, you did. You helped form the Electoral Officials Academy, inspired so many people to become involved and make sure that they knew what they were doing if they were on the city council. They really needed to know what they were doing. They needed to know the laws, they needed to know what would keep us out of getting in legal trouble, and that's one thing that I think inspired me so much, was learning about government based on your example. He was one of the first people on the board, he was the first Madison Heights resident on the board. He was one of the first people in the state of Michigan to earn his Electoral Officials Academy degree, which I then tried to inspire, and he inspired me so much that I went on to earn mine as well. He's just a role model for me and always will be, and I will try and keep your seat warm, because I know, and I hope you're gonna be back someday, but I wanted to say thank you for everything you've done. And always, please remember to vote, it's not only a privilege, it's a responsibility. Everybody in this room and everybody within this, out of my voice, really needs to vote for those candidates that you feel are gonna do a good job. And I want to thank all the people that have put their hats in the ring to run for our city council and for mayor. I think that is a really responsible commitment to have to do that, to put yourself out, hoping that you're gonna know all the answers to the questions, and obviously, you never will, but neither do any of us. But I want to thank you all for your participation in government and for thinking that you may be good enough here to be, because you all are, and I want to thank you again. But, Rich, thank you again.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Mr. Sultis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the gentleman for calling me out tonight about helping the seniors in public, in front of everybody, on TV with a pumpkin hat. I appreciate that. You have a point, and if I get reelected, I'll work even harder for the seniors. I'd rather roast Rich, but I don't think we have time for that. I think that'd be interesting. But Rich was the one that actually encouraged me to run in the first place four years ago. It was an honor to serve with you, Rich. You're a veteran, and I totally respect that, and I look forward to working with you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich, I promise you'll get the last word. It's gonna be hard to say goodbye to you, Rich. You know, you've served our city for 20 years. You were the Mayor Pro Tem for many of those years, but, you know, you gave us an example that the job of a city council person is more than just City Hall, it's out there in the public. And all your community service with, you know, Little League football and baseball and scouting is truly a model for us, you know, but you also had a hand in other charity groups, like the Family Coalition and Youth Assistance and even Friends of Madison Heights Youth, and you were the director of the Chamber of Commerce or the president of the board. You really did it all. And, you know, something that you taught me, and I know some of us, is you reminded us that we, you know, even in this day of technology, that we still need to speak to each other face-to-face, and that you, and that breeds respect for each other, because it's easy to debate each other online, but, you know, when you're face-to-face, you get to know the person, you get to know what they believe in, and I think that's really how the city has made progress, is just your personal touch on so many issues. But thank you so much for your service. Is there any further business before council, before I hand over the gavel? All right, Mr. Clark, you get the final word this evening. The floor is yours, sir.
If I could have Dave give me a hand with this. They presented me, I was nominated by a couple of my neighbors, Pat and John. This is what they call the quilt of valor. There are a group of ladies stitching sisters quilts of valor. There was, there was about 10 other veterans that received all different designs, and it was quite an honor. They had a ceremony to present this to us, and I will say that anyone who would like to nominate a veteran to receive one of these, let me know. I will get to give you the card, that you can call the people in charge, and they will set it up. All these things are done at the Colosseum Police Department. They have a small banquet room there, and that's where you go receive this, and it was a real honor for me to receive it. I was gonna take and put it in a box with glass on it. They said, "Hold on, no. We may just keep you warm. You don't put it in a box." You don't put it in a box. I would also like to thank the people that have been with me the whole, my whole 20 years, Bob Corbett, Bob Gettins, Margie. It was a real honor to work with them and all the council and the mayor now, and also the past mayors, especially Ed Swanson, who was a personal friend, and also the city employees. I feel like part of a family, and the city employees made me feel that way, and I enjoyed every minute of it. Like they say, I may be back, I don't know. I still feel young enough that I can, I'm still gonna contribute to the city with the programs that they have for the seniors, and I'm gonna sign on with the police department again to take care of the reserve vehicles with the one that's in charge now, John Galazzo, who does a terrific job. Oh, he's gonna let me have a little hand in it. So I would like to thank everybody, citizens that kept me up here for 20 years, and the only thing I would like to say for my accomplishments, I missed one meeting in 20 years, so it was quite an honor to do that, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.